Yeah, Mayor's got it. Whoever's calling.
I'm not. There it is. I used to know mine, but now I'm forty. I can't see the time, by the way.
I know. It's very disturbing.
All right, at seven o'clock, call this regular city council meeting order. Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a full meeting tonight, so clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline.
President.
Schultz.
Here.
Lavalley.
Here.
Carncross. Lancaster.
Here.
Gorman. Perkins.
Present.
Luna. Gorman is present mayor.
All right, thank you. We have Alderwoman Rosa Luna, who's going to attend the meeting electronically, so if we can call her, please. Hello, Rosa, we are calling you for the city council meeting, so you're now attending electronically. All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that Rosa Luna has is attending the meeting electronically. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Is there any item on the agenda that's not on the agenda that the public wishes to address city council? Seeing none, we will move on to item number five, which is the truth in taxation public hearing. Let's see. Call the meeting in a order for a hearing on truth in taxation, public hearing. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline.
President.
Schultz.
Here.
Lavalley.
Here.
Carncross.
Here.
Lancaster.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Perkins.
Present.
Luna. Gorman is present mayor.
All right, thank you. So just a brief understanding of what's happening, the city council is seeking to levy, a balloon levy. This would allow the city to essentially capture all the new growth that's happened within our community over the last year. This is very important because it creates the EAV, the, uh, uh, uh... Yeah, equalize, that's where I was looking for it. Equalize assessed value for all the property within the city. Unfortunately, the process requires that the, you know, the city must start its budgeting process before we know what the actual EAV is for our community. The county supplies the city with an estimate of what the EAV is, but we know it does not include all the new growth that has happened, including, you know, the vast number of homes that we've built and a couple of commercial properties that have expanded and been built. And so consequently, doing a balloon levy allows us to capture that new unrealized growth. When it finally goes to the county in March, when the county finally figures out the full EAV, at that time, your property tax, the actual levy, would be limited to 3.4% over the previous levy, plus new growth. And so that is from the PTEL, which is the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, that prevents the city from raising taxes greater than 5%. Or the Consumer Price Index, which the past year is 3.4%. So the most that it can go up for your property is 3.4% plus any new growth. And so that's what this hearing is for. Is there anyone that wishes to address city council concerning the truth in taxation hearing? Seeing no one wishing to address city council, seek a motion to close the truth in taxation hearing.
Make a motion to close the truth in taxation hearing?
Second.
Have a motion by Hatterline, second by Carncross. Any comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
All right, thank you. We'll close the truth in taxation hearing. All right, item number six is the consent agenda, six A through six I. Are there any items on the consent agenda that city council wishes removed from the consent agenda? Are there any items that the public wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Schultz, second by Carncross, to approve the consent agenda, six A through six I. Any comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline? Yes. Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalley?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, clerk. Excuse me, item number seven is dispensed, since nothing was removed from the consent agenda. We'll move on to item number eight. Item eight is the appointment oath of office of Public Works Superintendent Mike Rousey. Mike Rousey has been interviewed by city staff, as well as the Infrastructure Committee. At this juncture, we would like to appoint him as the superintendent of utilities. So I seek a motion to approve the appointment of Mike Rousey to Public Utilities Superintendent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Carncross, second by Hatterline. Any comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalley?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
All right, thank you, clerk. Would you please, we're in, Mike? If you could come over here, we're gonna take a photo, too, so. Mike, why don't you take a seat at the table, please? Welcome aboard. Well, he will actually start, um, he has to, December 16th will be his actual first day.
So if he hasn't officially started, why is he at the head of the table?
Can we ask him questions about the staff report?
You can certainly ask him, don't know if he'll have any answers. Because I think it's customary to have him come join our team, since he's coming to our team.
Just wait, just one minute.
All right, thank you. Item number nine is the payment of bills. Seek a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,119,091.21.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Schultz, and second by Gorman. Any other comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Lavalley? Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, clerk. Item number 10 is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation regarding the UDO text amendment. Recommendation is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending 8.2 Use Matrix to include cannabis dispensary and cannabis craft grower as a permitted use in the M1 zoning district, and a banquet hall as a conditional use in the M1 zoning district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by, uh, correction, Schultz, and second by Lancaster. Any comments, questions here?
I have one. The definition, I think, should be in the ordinance as well. Of the difference, I think it should still be in there, so there's no misunderstanding of everything. So when someone comes in, they understand the difference between the two dispensary and the, was it crafting, whatever that was?
Craft grower.
Yes. I think it should still be in the part of that, in the definition of the ordinance. And as you've seen, we keep coming back to these ordinance, because everyone says ours are vaguely written, and we always come back and trying to amend everything, so why don't we get this as perfectly as well done correctly? Instead of just, because it's not gonna hurt the ordinance at all, it just helps it.
I see no issue with ensuring that the definition is included in the... Is, are these definitions official definitions? Counselor, can you answer that?
When you say official, I mean, they're the definitions that are within the Illinois cannabis...
Does a state recognize these definitions?
Yeah, it's their statute, yes.
Can't they just be put in by reference, then, to wherever they came from?
If we get to that, yes, I mean, that would be my suggestion, if we were gonna actually adopt the definitions. My suggestion would be that you adopt them as defined by this statute. That way, if they change, you're in line with what the state is, is, what the state's position is on it.
Okay. Alderman, do you care to amend your motion to include states adopting the state's definitions?
Absolutely.
I'd like to...
Amend your second?
Yeah. I'd like to amend my second.
To adopt the...
To adopt the state definition.
State definitions, yeah, I should have said.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster? Yes. Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalley? All ayes, motion carries. Ordinance 2024-129.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on to item number 11. The Community and Economic Development Committee recommends a UDO text amendment and anti-monotony provisions. Recommendation is to, is a motion to submit to the builder-friendly anti-monotony regulations to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further consideration.
Motion to approve.
Correction, yes, a motion to approve to send this to the Planning and Zoning...
Yeah, I'm motioning to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I kind of raised my voice at the end.
It sounded like you were asking a question.
Kinda, sorry. Motion to approve, there we go. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Carncross, second by Schultz. Any other comments, questions on this?
Yes. You know, I'm, this seems kind of arbitrary, but I'm probably okay with most of it. The snout houses, though, has me a little bit. I don't understand. What is the reason for rejecting a snout house?
Just to clarify, the only motion that is being approved tonight is consideration to petition the Planning and Zoning to amend the UDO. The actual consideration of the ordinance will be considered by the committee, and then ultimately back to this body.
This seems like deja vu.
We had it with something, it was a different issue, but it was similar. There were amendments to the UDO that, it was the same thing, where we were petitioning to send it to the Planning and Zoning. So that's where we're at at this point. Doesn't mean you can't discuss it if you want to, but at this point in time, all that's being asked is authorizing that a petition be filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the UDO. You will get an opportunity to comment on it at a later date as well, if you want to.
But there is specific language that's being sent to the zoning board.
Correct, but it's, it's a petition. So it's not, the Planning and Zoning Commission can approve the petition with conditions and amendments to it. Whatever the Planning and Zoning does, it'll come back to this body, and this body can approve it with amendments, can send it back, can approve it as is. Again, I'm not saying you can't discuss that tonight, I'm just saying that, like, you will get another opportunity to discuss it. To the extent, I think, that individuals have questions or comments about it, you can also certainly speak to staff, you know, throughout the process as well.
Yeah, and I guess, I don't want to take too much time, but in case anyone on the Planning and Zoning Commission reads the minutes of this meeting, I just would like to say that, you know, it, um, the snout house part of it, and evidently it has something to do with a garage being a prominent feature on the building. But if you had exactly the same footprint, the same foundation, and you put a great room where the garage was, and put the garage set back with the same sized door, then it'd be okay. And it seems to me like, you know, in the future at least, when we do these things, and maybe it's something the planning and zoning commission can look at, is that the reason they do this is so they get the maximum out of square feet in the smallest lot possible. And everybody, and cars are still important in this society. Okay, so I think that's the reason. I noticed that Barrington, still, they're still, they're building snout houses in Barrington. They're building them in Lake Geneva. And so it hasn't been rejected everywhere. And I just want, it seems to me like, in the future, if we're gonna do these things, when they lay out these developments, all you gotta do to solve the problem is make the lots wider, and so that you can have a garage on the same level as the rest of the house, and you can still get a three-bedroom, a good-sized three-bedroom house on it. So I'm, I'm just, it seems to me like this is kind of an arbitrary thing, and I hope they'll look at that when they, and maybe define it closer or something. That's it.
All right, do you have a comment?
Yeah, my only comment was that, at least from watching the, the meeting and reading through the comments, that it seemed like exactly what, what Alderman Perkins brought up about the vagueness of some things in our ordinance, it seemed like the, by, the idea of making it more builder-friendly was to make it a little more vague, was what it seemed like the discussion was leading to. I may have misunderstood that, but I just...
I can clarify that just a little bit, for those that weren't at the meeting, or anybody who's listening that wasn't, just so there's some continuance from the discussion between that meeting to this meeting. Basically, the idea was, we were presented with two different variations of what would, was a proposed draft of it to submit. One of them was a more strict, word by word, here's, you know, line by line, this is gonna be the book that we have to follow, and this is the strict monotony limitations, and our zoning, our planning department would have to follow that to the T. Another version with a little bit of vague language added was you, was presented in a way that would allow the building, planning department, a little bit of flexibility, not carte blanche, but a little bit of flexibility with developers, because the, the idea is, is that we're, we're looking for diversified housing. The other thing we have is not all of our lots are uniform, not all of our, uh, uh, neighborhoods are built uniform. We have ones that have already been built that have some level of design in it, that if we were to drastically change the design and limit, it would look really awkward, because you'd have a certain size, a bunch of houses, and then you'd have a couple of them that can't be built that way, and would be limited to what builders would want to see. The last part of it was to also make it so that we can still have a working relationship with the developers that we have coming in and working now, without going through and basically just spitting in their soup and saying, you know, "We know that this is what you want to build, but we're not gonna let you build any of that anymore."
So does that mean that we are gonna let them build that?
No, it would be that we're gonna put, the idea is to put some monotony restrictions in, so we don't have just the idea of just a bunch of houses that are, all you see is a giant garage, and, you know, a small house attached to the giant garage.
So for instance, duplexes up by North Field, north of North Field, are those gonna continue to be built after this ordinance is in effect?
Well, I mean, it would be...
That will be identical to one another, except for the color?
It would have, I mean, well, no, if you read through the wording, there are, there, well, again, it all depends on what the zoning board comes back with and what we approve. But the wording that was used in both versions was that a certain amount of feet would be permitted, then a, there would have to be features that are different, then it could be permitted again. And I want, I don't want to have to clarify, but I want to say it was like three lots. I think with the way that was measured, I was like, on the fourth lot, you would be able to repeat something from four... Yeah, but because the lot sizes, it would overlap, so you'd have, I want to say, I believe it was the fourth lot, because of how, how it added up, because it would be just short. So about every fourth house would be, could be quote-unquote identical to the fourth one, so it would break up the monotony and limit some of those design features that we've got in those areas that are considered, people want, say are unflattering, but not be so strict that we have builders coming in that literally can't work with us, because Donovan's hands are tied by our law that we make. So we want them to be just flexible enough. If we need to tighten it up later, we also can do that as well, but we wanted to be compromised. That was the intent.
Thank you.
Is that satisfying?
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalley?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, clerk. Item number 12 is the proposed tax levy ordinance. Recommendation is a motion to adopt the proposed tax levy ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt the proposed tax levy ordinance?
Second.
Motion by Hatterline, second by Carncross. Any other comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalley?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster? All ayes, motion carries. Ordinance 2024-131.
Thank you, clerk. Item number 13 is a proposed tax abatement ordinance. The abatement is meant for those revenue bonds issued for the water system in Tiff District. Pledge revenues are sufficient to pay for the principal and interest. Therefore, we recommend adopting the proposed tax levy abatement ordinance.
Make a motion to approve the proposed tax levy abatement ordinance?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Hatterline, second by Gorman. Other comments, questions here?
Can I just say, I want to thank Deb for explaining this to me. I think I probably ask her every year to explain this, but just for everyone's sake, because it's, it can be very confusing, is what the ordinance says, is that for the Tiff District and the water district, the water system bonds, that those bonds, we are not, the tax levy that we just approved, those funds are not being used to pay those bonds. We have other sources of revenue that are paying those bonds, and so that's why it's abated. So it's not coming out of the tax levy to pay those bonds. And now that I've said that out loud at the meeting, hopefully I will remember that.
Well, it, every year, we have this recommendation, and it's, it's a good thing, you know, it's a good thing.
It is, it is.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalley?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries. Ordinance 2024-131. Tax levy ordinance is actually ordinance 130.
Oh, okay, I'm making a change on my, thank you. 130 and then 130. Item number 14 is the Infrastructure Committee recommendation concerning grease trap ordinance. We recommend to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Section 13A.06 regarding grease oil and sand interceptors.
I did bring this up earlier with the city administrator, I, because at the infrastructure committee meeting, I was not thinking this at the time, but looking at it, doesn't the county health department already look at this stuff and make sure it's being regulated?
The county, the, the county health department looks at stuff like sanitation, cleanliness, the building, things like that, but the county health, the health department doesn't check registrations on grease traps, and if they've been cleaned recently. We've had a few businesses in town that, you know, the...
Has that changed recently, the last few years? Because I know people that work in the industry, that they say the county health department makes sure that they're doing it, or if they have an outside grease trap, it is by the third party it's being done.
If, even if that is the case, right now with the amount of offenders that we have, and the, the problems that we've had with this, it means that we need another leg to stand on when it comes to further enforcing these rules. And, you know, to have this capability in-house would further us along. You know, if, if the county was doing this, and if this is true, then, you know, we wouldn't have the issues we have. But, you know, sort of like what I mentioned in the agenda supplement, is that we've had situations where, you know, they'll...
I'm not denying that part, I'm asking also, if, if we can work with, we talk about working with other government bodies, why don't we reach out to the, the county health department and say, "Hey, if you guys are doing this regulation, you know, checking it, see if we have to do it again or not, or whatnot, because that goes and puts a strain on Donovan again, and who has a lot of stuff to do already."
This, so what, what was discussed is currently, you know, per, per staff discussion at administration level, most likely this will be happening in-house, be it somebody from either Public Works or Utilities that's inspecting this stuff.
It's the building department in the ordinance, that's why.
And realistically speaking, that can be something that might be amended, but the building department is only functioning as the conduit for registering and making, because Public Works and Utilities has no way to process fees, to check licenses or check registration of these items. So the building department would be merely sort of the, the central hub for tracking this stuff.
And I noticed in the ordinance that, that you guys wrote up is, the school district is gonna be waived the fees, but...
Typically speaking, speaking, typically speaking, any businesses that either identify as, you know, a public entity, you know, charity, not-for-profit, those are typically waived, the fees are waived for those items, for those businesses.
We're still gonna be checking those places.
Yeah.
We're not gonna give a little favor, because they're not paying us 75 bucks a year.
No. And realistically, the, the basis of this is, you know, an in-person inspection, checking your records, making sure that it was cleaned, you know, within the last year, that it's being kept up on. And then, you know, the, the 75 dollar fee was just to recollect, you know, some of that staff time.
So my other suggestion is maybe look into the health department for this stuff, and see what they've done in the past, since they do inspections. And I'm pretty sure anytime we've ever done any outing for, um, nationally now, health department comes out, make sure our food is at the right temperature, and stuff like that, so that's the stuff they already do. And they do grease traps, because I know many people in the facility, the restaurant. So that's when you reach out to the health department to see what is, and we, we never did that. So that's one thing, we talk about communicating with other government bodies, and getting along with other government bodies, but we keep forgetting to actually communicate with them.
Yeah, if, if the county health department, if this is their purview, if this is something that they're supposed to be on top of, I agree, it makes sense for us to reach out to them, talk to them about it, and see what's, what's falling through the cracks. And maybe we find out that they don't do it anymore, or that our, we, you know, something's changed. But if, if they have a job to do, and it's not meeting our needs, then let's talk to them.
So then I make a motion that we table this, um, ordinance, and direct city staff to communicate with county government, to see if this is in their purview to be done. And then we could, at the next meeting, that this, this could be addressed. I mean, should be a quick phone call to find out if they're responsible for this, and if they are, then this should be dealt with. This is their job.
My suggestion would be to amend your motion to specifically continue this item to the next council meeting.
Okay, that's fine, I do that. Amend this...
Okay, that's fine, I do that. I amend this, I amend this motion to be continued to the next council meeting, and direct city staff to communicate with appropriate county organization that would address the health department, obviously. That's my motion.
I'll second. A motion by Schultz and a second by Perkins to table the issue, correction to continue the issue to the next city council meeting, and direct staff to discuss the item with the county health department to see if it falls under their purview. Any other comments or questions?
Yes. I don't know why we have to do that. It seems to me that this expense, this is, causes a huge expense on the city, not on the county, not on anybody else. The only people that get hurt when this isn't done is the city and our system. All we're doing is putting in an enforceable method of making them do it. Now, if you want to work in the background with the county and see if they'll take it over or whatever, that's, to me, that would be fine, but there's no reason to hold this up.
We're only talking two weeks, our next meeting's in two weeks, or three weeks. That's it, I mean-
You know, it is holiday season time, too.
Oh, I get it.
I don't think you're going to get an answer from the county that quick whether, oh, shoot, we forgot that, and the whole county, we better go start checking those things.
I know, I'm simply saying, it's only two week, the next meeting's December, what, 11th?
10th.
I mean-
Oh, sorry.
Two weeks.
Any other comments or questions? All right, you're voting to continue the item until next city council meeting, December 10th, and, and staff will reach out to the county health department. Hearing no further comments or questions, clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
No.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Motion is approved, six to two.
Okay, thank you. Item number 15 is the Infrastructure Committee Recommendation for Wastewater Penalties. Seeking a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Section 13A dot 1.5 regarding wastewater penalties.
I'll make the motion and approve.
Second. A motion by Perkins, a second by Schultz. Any comments or questions here?
For the sake of the meeting and the public, since our water bills are a controversial subject for most, we have some clarification, just for the record, on what the penalties are, what changes being made by the ordinance. I'm just asking if we can have that clarified.
We can, let me just pull the-
That's fine.
The ordinance.
Oh, the, the fee structure.
Yeah, so here you go, I had it in front of me. The first offense is $50 per consecutive day, two inspections per calendar year. The second offense is $100 per consecutive day, two inspections per calendar year. The third offense is $250 per consecutive day, two inspections per calendar year. The fourth offense and continuing is $500 per consecutive day and two inspections per calendar year. If the violation is deemed egregious or negligent, the fee will be $500 per consecutive day, even, even if there were no previous offenses. Each of these fees will be, plus all costs of prosecution, including but not limited to filing fees, witness fees, attorney fees, and revocation of the sewer permit, each act of violation in each day upon which a violation occurs or exists or constitutes a separate offense.
Thank you.
So what is it now?
I believe it's $25.
The, the, these fees were a second part of the arm of having the grease trap inspections and the grease trap registrations, which is why it calls out inspections per calendar year. This is to further the, sort of, the, the authority or the, the impact of people in violation of that. So this is, I think, the current language in this is pretty, pretty lenient when it comes to fines and fees for basically not following the wastewater ordinance. So this was just to-
I, I, I believe, yes, that's correct, it was for the wastewater penalties. So it's actually kind of in addition to the previous continued motion.
Oh, so these are penalties related to the grease trap?
No, this is-
No?
Oh, no, I'm on the wrong one.
Item 15.
Okay, I was thinking 16, that was-
So these are penalties related to going out to inspect and finding a violation with grease trap?
Find a violation which they have not done their, their appropriate work of cleaning out.
Okay. So should we move this to the next meeting, so that it goes with the-
You currently have a motion by Perkins and a second by Schultz to approve the-
I was, I was thinking I was on delinquents, I rescind mine.
I rescind my second, then.
All right. What's your pleasure?
Motion to send this to the next meeting.
Second.
To coincide with the-
Item 14.
With item 14.
All right, we have a motion by Carncross, second by Perkins to continue this item into the December 10th city council. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now, item 16, which is the Infrastructure Committee Recommendation Concerning Delinquent Water Bills, the recommendation is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Section 13C point 1.0 regarding fees and charges for water and sewer.
I would ask that the, that we, since this is again, water-related issue, we have a lot of constituents who either get confused or are very sensitive about the water billing and any changes to it, I just want to make sure that we've addressed it in the record the same way, just, what, what are we changing?
Sure. So-
So they understand what we're saying.
The answer here is 13C one dot 1.0 is reinstatement of service. Reconnection charges shall be paid in the sum of $100 each time the service is reconnected. Service shall only be reconnected 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday. For any reconnections outside of the stated hours, including weekends or city-observed holidays, a fee of $200 shall be charged. Upon the third consecutive shut-off resulting in reconnection and any subsequent consecutive reconnections thereafter, the reconnection fee will be doubled. Service will only be reconnected following full payment of the reconnection charge, any outstanding balance on the account or otherwise directed by the city.
And was that, did we double the, is, is the proposal to double the fees?
The proposal is to increase the first-time fee and to double the fees for subsequent failures to pay.
But I think she's asking from the current fees.
From what it currently is.
Yes, the, the, the current, the current reconnect fee is 100, or is $50 for regular hours. The after-hours is an additional 50, so it's $100 total. So this reflects a doubling of the regular reconnects and doubling of the after, so essentially you're doubling both fees. Also, this changes the, the time that you can, that somebody, that somebody who needs a reconnect, right now, they have up until 3:20 PM, which they will call at 3:20 and pay the bill, and we're expected to be out there at no additional cost, from 3:20 to 3:30, where it's just not, not probable, between making sure the payment clears, dispatching a Public Works employee, by the time they come back, overtime's been incurred, and this is just to, to capture that burden upon the person that's desiring the reconnect, rather than subsidizing that through everybody else who's paying on time.
Thank you.
You just recognize that Public Works' normal working hours end at 3:30.
Right.
So a 3:20 cutoff date time is, is not-
Not good.
It's not workable.
Motion to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Section 13C 10 regarding fees and charges for water and sewer.
Second.
A motion by Schultz, second by Perkins. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, my question is, what, what does it take for somebody's water to be disconnected? How, how far in arrears do they have to be with paying their bills?
I believe it's 30 days past the final notice, and Louie, you could, if you have any better recollection of this, but it, it's, it's significant, and then we also have a, a list of, you know, I think we have 280-ish to 350-ish people that are always on the shut-off list, and we have about the same, we have like 30 people, or 30 residents, or 30 properties, that are habitually getting to the point where we dispatch somebody to shut them off.
So to clarify, it's, right now, it's, you have 30 days plus an additional 10 once you get a notice of shut-off.
So it's 30 days, but, so it's 30 days after they haven't paid their bill?
Correct.
30 days after they haven't paid their bill, they're, they're issued a shut-off notice, and then they have 10 days after the shut-off notice, the city will turn off the water.
Okay. Are there, are there circumstances from a, a health, safety standpoint that we don't shut off people's water?
No.
Like, like, like other utilities, like gas and electric, certain months of the year, they don't shut the power on?
If they do not pay their bill and their water is shut off, they have a certain time period to have the water reconnected, or they must vacate the premises because they are not permitted to stay on the, you know, live in the premises without running water.
What is that timeframe?
Donovan, is it three days? I, I don't know the timeframe.
I think rules have changed where as long as you have potable water, so if you're bringing it in, you can still flush a toilet with a bucket of water. So they, the rules have changed where it's difficult to have a property vacated, I think, without a judge's order to do that.
And just curious with, if this, if there are rental properties, landlords that are on this habitual not paying list, because I would just feel uncomfortable if it was affecting renters.
Right now, it doesn't discriminate between rental or, or renters or homeowners. If you, if you're not paying your bill on time, then you still get the same 10-day notice, and then the, the water is shut off.
Right, so if your landlord isn't paying his bill, isn't paying the water bill?
Usually the landlord receives the bill and then gives it to the renter, and the renter pays their bill.
That's not true for all properties.
Not true for all.
Some properties, the, the landlord is responsible for the water bill, it depends on what their lease is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries. Ordinance 2024-132.
Thank you, clerk. Item number 17 is the Administration Committee Recommendation Concerning Surplus Property, specifically cell phones. Seeking a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance declaring surplus property. Please take note that there were a couple of additional phones that were added to your list. I think that was set at each of your seats.
In the packet, you'll see that your Apple iPhone SE listed quantity is four. What was actually given to you earlier today, we found another SE phone, so the quantity asked is five, and then we found an Apple iPhone 4 that's no longer in use, so that's also been added to this list.
How old is an Apple iPhone?
So you got, if you got an Apple iPhone 4, if we find like a Sony Walkman or a, an eight-track tape deck, do we have to declare that surplus, or can we just trash it? I believe the iPhone 4 was-
Well, is there-
It's public property.
Collectors or things like that?
Well, it was the last phone that Steve Jobs designed. The 4. The 4.
There you go.
He passed away, and the 4S was rebranded to this 4S, and they've-
Right now, it's been sitting in a drawer. It'd be nice to get rid of that.
Power that puppy up and see if it- I doubt it would work. It may not even work.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we declare the iPhone's surplus property. I'll make a motion-
I'm making a motion.
To adopt the proposed ordinance declaring the iPhone's surplus property.
All right, I have a motion by Hatterline and a second by Luna. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries. Ordinance 2024-133.
Thank you. Item number 18 is the Administration Committee Recommendation, member, member, memorandum of understanding for the Fraternal Order of Police. The recommendation here is to adopt the, and authorize the execution of the memorandum of understanding with the Fraternal Order of Police. If you recall, this is concerning uniform office.
I'll make a motion to adopt and authorize execution of the MOU with the FOP.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Perkins, second by Hatterline to adopt and authorize the execution of the MOU for the Fraternal Order of Police. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
All right, item number 19 is the Administration Committee Recommendation for an RFQ concerning employee health insurance and related benefits for broker slash consultant. The recommendation here is to approve the RFQ, employee health insurance and related benefits submitted by Connor Gallagher.
Motion approved.
Second. Now, is this actually an RFQ, which would be in a request for qualifications, or is this a proposal?
It's actually a proposal. It should say an RFP.
Okay, but it's a proposal, not a request for proposal.
Yeah, you're awarding, so, yes, there is a correction there. It should be, you're awarding the contract to Connor Gallagher-
Okay.
As a result of the RFP.
Okay.
That'd meant request for quote.
So there were several quotes that were received.
Mind your p's and q's.
They were reviewed by the Administration Committee, and so what is being sought here is actually approval to approve the-
Contract.
The contract submitted by Connor Gallagher. So to be clear, I want to ensure that your motion meets that requirement. Mr. Carncross?
Oh, yeah, it does. My understanding was that, so that's why I motioned for it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Connor Gallagher concerning employee health insurance and related benefits. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 20 is the Administration Committee's Recommendation Concerning the RFP Audit Services for 2025 through 2029. The recommendation is to approve the RFP submitted by Audit Services for 2025 through 2029 that was submitted by Lauterbach and Amen. They are currently our current auditors, and the, the admin committee reviewing all of the proposals selected, Alderman and Amen, as we recommended a contract to-
So I would make a motion to approve, again, the contract for audit services for FY 2025 through 2029, submitted by Lauterbach and Amen.
Second.
A motion by Hatterline and second by Carncross to approve the RFP submitted for audit services for FY 2025 through 2029 by Lauterbach. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 21 is a Administration Committee Recommendation Concerning the- Item twenty-one is an Administration Committee recommendation concerning the RFP for compensation study, seeking approval to approve the RFP compensation study submitted by MGT in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with MGT for the compensation study in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Hatterline, second by Perkins, to approve the compensation study submitted by MGT in the amount of twenty-one eight forty. Any other comments or questions? This is where they are going to provide us a complete study of the compensation for city employees, as well as look at all of their positions and the definitions of those positions, so that when we go for contract negotiations, we understand where the city's compensation currently sits relative to similar peers. Not directly, it would change when there's a new contract negotiation. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two is an Administration Committee recommendation concerning RFP for IT services and the resulting contract. Motion is sought to approve the RFP IT services contract submitted by Complete Systems Integration, also known as CSI, in the amount of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. This is an annual contract, so you're approving a contract for one year.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster. Any other comments or questions here? It is one year?
Yes.
Because it didn't seem like the thing changed any in the packet from the admin meeting. So far as the contract is for one year with extensions thereafter if the city chooses to extend, but if at that time you decide you want to go out for another RFP, that's also possible. Yeah, okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, because I know we discussed the one year and I just wanted to make sure because that's what it was, okay? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number twenty-three is the Administration Committee's recommendation concerning a new development agreement with Wholesome. Wholesome is the contractor that is, owns the gravel pit on the north side of town that's never been actually mined yet, but is still there available. Recommendation is to approve the mayor and the city administrator to continue negotiations on a draft agreement, including a tolling agreement if needed. We actually believe that the tolling agreement is needed. We provided that to you by email because by the time it was completed, it was after the admin committee. So all the tolling agreement essentially does is give us additional time and allows us to, because the contract is going to expire by December eighth, and so all it does is pauses everything, extends that time for ninety days to allow us to negotiate a developer's
Yeah, the one thing I would add is the version that I think everyone received yesterday, there's been, I believe it's four amendments since you all observed that. Believe me, they're not that significant. The first one, Meyer Material Company has been revised to say Meyer Material Company LLC, now known as Wholesome USA and Chicago Title Land Trust Company under trust number five, three, two, seven, eight. The second change is in paragraph two, the second sentence which talked about prior expirations has been removed. It's been revised to say, "All rights under the annexation agreement and First Amendment shall continue to be in effect for all purposes during the tolling period." There's just conflicting language regarding pausing the time periods and there being an expiration, so it's just intended to clarify that. Paragraph eight, under notices, the contact information for the wholesome representatives was added. And then the last page, the signature line, Jack Keeler, general manager, was added for Meyer Material. This afternoon, I did receive a request from representatives for wholesome with regard to paragraph five, which talks about either party may terminate this agreement upon forty-five days written notice to the other party. Essentially, the request was to add something that to the extent that we are engaged in good faith negotiations that are active, that the parties can't automatically terminate the tolling agreement. Essentially, the concern is, is that if we're tolling it for ninety days, why are we allowing either party to just willy-nilly say, hey, we're done in forty-five days? I don't have any issue with it. Obviously, it's up to this body if that's something you guys are comfortable with. But if we're agreeing to toll it for ninety days, I would tend to agree that to the extent we're in ongoing negotiations, it doesn't really make sense to just be able to terminate it, you know, without any reason. So I wouldn't have an issue with it, but it's ultimately up to this body.
Well, aren't we being asked to approve you and the mayor and the administrator going ahead to negotiate the agreement and the tolling agreement? I mean, we're not specifically approving the tolling agreement tonight.
I think that given that our next council meeting is not until December tenth and the annexation agreement is set to expire on December eighth, 2024, I think that it is important if a tolling agreement and continuing negotiations with the developer is something that this body is interested in, then my suggestion would be, to the extent this body deems it appropriate, that you authorize the mayor within the confines of the tolling agreement that you've received, but also the amendments that were just discussed, that you would authorize the execution of that in order to preserve the ability to negotiate without the annexation agreement expiring.
So TJ, then, paragraph five, which mentions the ninety day, the
Forty-five.
Terminating, should that just be removed? Is that what you're saying? Just remove that and put in a statement that you're negotiating in good faith and?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess my recommendation would be, and I think it was, I think it would be to say, "Either party here too may terminate this agreement upon forty-five days written notice to the other party unless the parties are engaged in good faith negotiations there." So like if hypothetically, we send a proposal and we don't hear anything back or they're not negotiating good faith, then arguably, we could terminate it within forty-five days or vice versa. So I wouldn't remove it completely, but I do think adding the clarification that they've requested makes sense.
So that's fine. I'll make the motion to approve the mayor and the city administrator to continue negotiations on a draft agreement, including a tolling agreement with the amendments suggested by TJ.
Does that include execution of the tolling agreement?
Yes, correct. Including executing a tolling agreement as needed based on the amendments that TJ mentioned earlier in this meeting.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Schultz, a second by Carn Cross, to approve the mayor and city administrator to continue negotiations on a draft agreement, including executing the tolling agreement, which includes the five amendments discussed in the meeting just now. Any other comments or questions?
I would just ask that if there are any others, if there are any significant amendments to the tolling agreement, obviously, it'll give you the ability to enter in the agreement once we vote on this, assuming it's all yes. But if there are any major changes, if you could just notify us by email that those changes were made prior, then that would be appreciated.
But the ninety days, is that what we're agreeing on is the tolling agreement? Because during the admin committee meeting, it seemed like tolling agreements could vary from thirty days to a few years.
They could, so the
From the attorney that was there with us.
The request is ninety days.
Ninety days is what, okay, I just want to make sure that's what I'm understanding.
Yes. Now, I will add that if at near the, near the end of ninety days, if we've not come to an agreement, it's possible to extend the tolling agreement, which is what was discussed in the Administration Committee. But at this time, the tolling agreement is set for ninety days.
Okay. Verifying that.
Any other comments or questions? And one other clarification, you're only authorizing executing of the tolling agreement, not the developer's agreement. We would negotiate that and bring that back to council if we're final.
And that's what the ninety days is for?
Correct.
Yep.
All right, hearing no additional comments or questions, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item twenty-four. The Administration Committee recommendation seeks to amend the FY 2024, 2025 budget relating to the compensation study, the police pension, the MFT grant revenue and MFT maintenance expense, seeking a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance amending FY 2024, 2025 budget.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion by Carn Cross, second by Perkins. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thank you. Item number twenty-five is the Infrastructure Committee recommendation, pavement core engineering services from Midland Standard Engineering and Testing, Inc. Recommendation is to approve a motion, propose work for Midland Standard Engineering and Testing, Inc., also known as MSET, to assess the condition of existing residential street pavements, including ninety pavement cores with shallow depth subgrade probes for a total of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. This is needed for us to really understand where we, the condition of the substructure of our roads, so we know where to help us plan for future rebuilding of roads.
I'll make the motion approved.
Motion by Perkins, second by Lovely. Any other comments or questions here? I just want to say that twenty-five and twenty-six are kind of tied together. One's a step to take, and I wanted to ask, have they gotten back? Are they going to be able to start in December?
Them not being able to start was frost. We really haven't had any hard frosts or freezing yet, so I don't believe there's any reason they wouldn't be able to start in December. I'm sure if things change, they will let us know, so.
The problem, the problem we ran into, and help me out if I get this messed up at all, but is that we're trying to decide what to do with what streets, whether it's skip patch or actually rebuild the whole street or what needs to be done. And when we did the paver program, that told us what the surface was like, but we don't know what the, what's under the surface and whether or not it can, you know, hold up. And you hate to put good pavement on top of something that's going to sink right back into the hole again. So by drilling these ninety plugs throughout the city, we'll know what's under the roads. And then the second part of this, which we'll get to next, is that number twenty-six, Christopher Burke, the engineering group that we use, will take that information and develop a five-year plan to determine exactly how much money it's going to take and where it's going to go. So that's the purpose of this, is to finally get this thing kind of kick-started beyond just skip patching and, you know, and filling in cracks and that sort of thing. We're going to go beyond that, and this is how we're going to get there. But this is going to allow us, hopefully, to get started next year on an actual part of that five-year program.
And so the work in twenty-five, the coring, then that would inform what Christopher Burke does?
It's going to, it's going to inform a five-year plan. And what's going to happen
It's going to provide data to understand how we can structure that plan.
Thank you.
Over that five-year period. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Lovely?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz? Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-six is the Infrastructure Committee recommendation, proposal for professional engineering services from Christopher B. Burke Engineering for citywide road rehabilitation study. Motion is to, seeking a motion to approve Christopher B. Burke Engineering Plan for Professional Engineering Services for a citywide road rehabilitation study for a total of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
A motion by Carn Cross, second by Gorman. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, clerk. Item twenty-seven is the Infrastructure Committee recommendation concerning Starbucks' deferral of sidewalks, seeking approval to approve a five-year sidewalk deferral and accept a letter of credit in the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seven cents, which we use for the installation of sidewalks for the Starbucks project, deferring the installation of Starbucks sidewalks on fourteen and Maguire for a period not to exceed five years.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Perkins, second by Carn Cross. Any other comments or questions here?
Yeah, I have a question. Donovan, have they paid their permit fees yet? Is that checking the mail?
Mail, yeah.
Okay. As part of my daily ritual at work, I get to watch them work on this site. I just want to ensure that all they're doing is site work, is that correct?
Correct.
They're not doing anything else?
Yeah, we will not do any inspections until we get that permit fee, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then I had a question about sidewalks at a couple of other new businesses, namely the Dunkin' Donuts and the Car Wash.
Okay.
Well, did the engineer tell them they didn't have to do the sidewalks at the Christopher Burke told them they didn't have to do sidewalks at Dunkin'.
Right.
Dunkin', but not the Car Wash.
Right.
Car Wash sidewalks are going in, they're waiting on IDOT. IDOT has been taking a while. They need to connect their water main, and I've told them not to push too hard on IDOT or they'll get put to the bottom of the stack, so they're in a waiting pattern right now to get that finished so they can finish their parking lot. Admiral Drive is a private road, so we can't require sidewalks there. I'm sorry, not Admiral, but next to Dunkin' Donuts. That's a private road.
But fourteen is a public road.
Right, and Christopher Burke told them that since we received a grant, that we'd be doing that sidewalk, that it already been engineered.
We had this five, six, eight months ago, and I did tell them during that meeting that we should have not done that because of costs of everything going up, we should have had that, so that grant could have got all this stuff done and we would have had less to work with. I mentioned that in that meeting, and of course, but that was foresight of me, once I saw that as well. Now, I do look at this stuff every time we get it to make sure it's done.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? You're none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderwoman Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight is a strategic vision review. Are there any items on the strategic vision that council wishes to review tonight?
I mean, a motion to bypass this and go to monthly staff reports.
I did have one question, I guess, if that's okay, and then we can bypass. It was just related to the, to the fiber, since we were told that that would be going in soon, I guess. And I know that that's going to-
On the fiber optics?
Yeah, and I know that that was also going to impact whether, you know, at the point when we were going to start offering, or the plan was to offer downtown Wi-Fi, if we had, since fiber's in the process of going in, and I've been trying to monitor SURF to kind of see, you know, how far along, but they don't have anything published, really. Just wondering if you guys had insight as to when they expect that to be done, at least for the city's part.
If they stop hitting that curve-
I'm not sure we have a full timeline.
We don't have a full timeline yet, but as soon as I can get an estimated date, I'll make sure to share it.
Okay, just curious, because that was one of our most, I guess, upcoming things that we were going to be able to address in the strategic vision, everything else is kind of down the road, so, okay, thanks.
I know they are fast and furious trying to get the fiber in the ground right now, so-
Oh, yeah, very fast and furious.
They, they, they're all over, and will continue as long as weather permits, so. I'm not sure why they, you know, even need to put those little flags in the ground, because they're hitting gas lines, like, they hit another one.
Oh, yeah, they hit one by, came by you on Dewey.
Yeah.
And I came and talked to them about that.
What I will say, from when I put my fence in, when you, when you call and have, have the ground scanned and all the flags are put in, I actually talked to the technician that was doing it, and he said they're pretty accurate within about eighteen inches on either side.
Yes, they are.
So, so when I'm-
And that's where you're not supposed to dig.
Three feet.
And if you hand dig, you can hand dig in there, but you gotta go nice and slow.
Well, the reason I say eighteen inches on either side is add those up side by side, and when I was running my fence post down the property line, I had power on either side and gas lines, so there was a lot of prayer going down each one of those, because you've got very, very little room for error. So, not to say that they shouldn't be hitting lines, but a little bit of grace is allowed, just because it's not super, super accurate.
So, as Alderman Perkins mentioned, him and I talked about this earlier today. I did reach out to SURF, and we're going to have a discussion as far as why is this continuing to happen. So far, just for the record, they've hit three gas lines, including the one today, since they started at the end of October.
That directional boring is-
It's actually when they hand dig.
But you know, they-
It wasn't the boring, most of them.
We had that, that other company come through Jefferson, you know, that put in that, that line, and they didn't hit anything.
No. No, they didn't, for all the, for all the school stuff. Yeah, they didn't hit anything.
And for the record, I did talk to someone who works with gas lines, and that should not be happening, if it's marked, and they're calling Julie and calling in.
Well, when they're, when they're, when they're digging, I mean, because they're supposed to dig a hole, and then do the directional boring from that hole, and the hole should, that's hand dug, should, they should find everything, they should see everything, literally see it.
And then that's when they can bore, yep.
Yeah, and then know where they can bore, and then they'll be fine.
In these instances, the project managers in Public Works here and there, we have to locate all this stuff. They've, they've ran thousands of feet of line so far, and like Alderman Perkins had said, like, this is happening when they're hand digging. So when they're, when they're hand digging for what they call flower pots, if they're anywhere near there, you know, hand digging's okay, but so far, it's been stuff like a shovel nick on the line, which causes a concern, or when they're moving the dirt around the line, the line removed itself, or, you know, it pulled out of the, the corporation where it was in. So I think in, all in all, considering how much, how much activity there is, and how much fiber piping's in the ground, they're doing pretty good. I know that one of the crews has been changed out.
I think that was the one that hit the first two.
I'm just, you know, remembering, it was a year ago, that a house exploded in Woodstock. So.
Maybe they need a, a water excavator.
There was also an armed robbery and a-
I'm just glad you guys aren't doing that.
After that explosion, it was quite a day.
Any other comments or questions on the strategic vision?
So rest assured that your concerns have been noted, and I'll be bringing it up in our-
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item twenty-nine is the monthly staff reports. So you have an opportunity to chat with our staff members. Mike, I'll let you off tonight.
Welcome aboard.
Donovan, can you give us an update from building and economic development? Yeah, we'll start with Dunkin' Donuts. They plan on being open, open the first week in December, and after they open their- About three weeks?
It was supposed to be ended in November.
It's less than three weeks. All right.
That's next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
Is it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Time flies. I swear. After they open their doors to the public, they expect to do a grand opening with the mayor and staff and stuff, so we'll keep you updated on when that will be. We got some good news today. Administrator Leoni and I met with a manufacturer out of state. They have signed the papers to move to Harvard and do a vacant fifty-thousand square foot facility in the industrial park, so we will be able to announce that name at the meeting in December. They still have to inform their employees and stuff. They do hope to offer some moving incentives to their employees to try and capture as many as they can to move to Harvard. So we'll be setting them up with potential real estate brokers and rentals. What they're paying in their current state is way more than what they would pay out here for the same unit. They'll get a lot more bang for their buck out here, and it's a lot safer. So we're happy to invite them to Harvard. It was great news that we received today. They're gearing up for fifty employees in a year's time, and hope to be up and ready by the end of January. So look forward to the next meeting when we can announce that, the name at least. Donovan, how long have we been in discussions with this company? Several months, and when they flew out here, we put on a good show. We had McHenry County Economic Development Corporation at the table with Mark Picos. We had McHenry County Workforce Network at the table, and of course, the stars up front there, Administrator Leoni and the mayor, to really showcase Harvard, and we did put on a good show, especially with our county partners. So they were impressed with that, and all the incentives between the state incentives, county incentives, and any incentives that we can provide. So we're excited, and that'll be what we do moving forward, is to have those people at the table whenever we're trying to attract the business to Harvard of that size especially.
Can we say what kind of stuff they do, or no?
I don't think we should yet.
And we're just out of precaution and to be respectful to their-
I'm just making sure.
And they did mention they're very anxious to be part and active players in the community, that they're the owner and the, well, the partners. We're even talking about joining the Eggnog Jog next week.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll be in town next week, and they're looking at their space, design and things like that, so. Okay, I thought I heard a sign up for the Eggnog Jog over there.
Oh, St. John's, are you in there?
Two years in a row.
Outside of the mayor, are you going to talk about the annual dinner event from- No, go right ahead, you can do that. Was that, was that last week already? Yes. Last week, the McHenry County Economic Development Corporation put on their annual event. There's a few hundred people there from around the county, business leaders and other stakeholders. We had nominated U.S. Medical Glove for their Welcome to McHenry County Award, which they did win, and the CFO from USMG gave a nice speech, talked about the partnership with Harvard, and then Harvard was mentioned again from the, I believe it was the CEO of Flowcon, who talked about their facility in Harvard during a speech that he had given, and then the Hall of Famer football, drawing a blank on his name, Dan Hampton was there as the keynote speaker. He referenced USMG a couple times and about the teamwork that they established there at their company a couple, you know, during his speech. So it was all Harvard all day in front of the county, so it was a real special night for us and Harvard, and for the mayor especially, so.
So the Bears are coming to Harvard.
That would be nice. That would be really nice, yeah. And that's all I have.
Care what you wish for. The casket's in the house to pay for.
I did want to add one thing to your report. Thanks to the efforts of trying to get Harvard's name out there and showing that we're open to inviting people in, there was a connection that was made, that we now have a meeting set up in December for a larger developer to come in and put up homes. So we hope to have more news on that in the weeks and months to come.
They get to have HOA. Or they don't get a park in their subdivision, that's all. I'll be, I will haunt you. I will be at that meeting. I don't care if I'm off this board. I will be at that meeting. You do not put a park in there unless they're taking care of it.
That's all I have, sir. All right, thank you. Rob?
All right. So for, for this month, we did wrap up the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five road program. The skip patching and crack sealing was completed with good results. I've heard positive comments from members of the community here and there about sort of the areas that were addressed. One of the things that was of note was there was quite a few areas where the paving crew, while they're only supposed to be doing a patch, ground straight through all surface layers and into subbase, really reinforcing how thin some of the streets are, you know, areas in Galvin Parkway and Yellowstone, the surface layer was three quarters of an inch thick, which is why it's not sticking and why it's coming out. So I will say that Chicago Land Paving was really great to work for. They worked with our quantities. Everything came in lower, and they did say that if we continue on sort of the size patches and the method that we do in the future with skip patching, that they would have a better rate yet. So they really enjoyed working with us, and it was reciprocal. Public Works has wrapped up tree, tree care stuff for this, for this season, as well as getting ready for plows. We got plows set up. We did have our first salting event, which went good. We have a new staff member, Trevor Dolgatch, which joined us just recently. He comes from a neighboring municipality, very, very smart, and he seems to be fitting in with the guys quite well. So that being said, we're getting ready for the, the holiday season. Reeds are up. We will be changing out some stuff with snowflakes and candy canes and some other decorations, because we have new spots in between Park and, or in between Park and Washington. So we'll shift some stuff around. There'll be some variety up there. Just getting ready for the winter season, maintenance and cleaning and all sorts of other tasks that yet to be completed. Lou, did you want to talk about the Rush Creek path, or?
Yeah, so, thank you. So one of the things that we're looking to do is to work with McDOT about the city taking the lead on putting in the walk path along McGuire between Shadow Creek and all the way over to Rush Creek. This is something that's new for the city. They're very excited to work with us. We are, I'm currently reviewing the IGA that would go on, and of course, that would come before the council for approval. And a little news, Scott and I talked about this, Scott Henning with McDOT, and he is very amenable to doing a ninety-five-five split, since we're taking the lead. So that's, that's very good. That saves us a considerable amount of money.
I thought we weren't going to pay any of it, because it was county's funding.
I was hoping, but, and that's still open, but the ninety-five-five is, is pretty good right now. We still have to do the IGA.
Okay.
And the nice thing with this, and this is also for our listeners out there, is that we do these kind of projects successfully. It helps keep things moving forward. The original plan for McDOT is that they weren't going to be able to touch this until twenty, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. We're looking to be able to do this in early, late twenty-five or early twenty-six. So it moves this, this timetable up and helps as far as residential development and with Parks and Rec, and helps them as far as planning out potential bike races or, or activities like that. So this is a good thing, and it shows that Harvard is picking up the momentum.
Um, I was kind of disappointed not to see the brand-new snowplow going down there when I saw the snow. I saw one of the older ones.
Well, the, so we, we only have one. The rest of the trucks remain. We do, the, the route that has the brand-new truck is basically Northfield Court North.
I would think we want Air Street, because we're trying to develop downtown.
The, so, Air Street, we have, we have one of the older trucks there with the, with the pavement conditions and the drivers.
Okay.
What we were doing, having those out there right now is just sort of, I have a driver who I would, who would accept the technology. They all would, but I think there's certain ones that have, you know, better grasp of that. So right now, that driver has that truck.
Well, so you guys did the work on Fifth Street with the skip patching, and it was one of those I could tell where you guys were, there was question marks on where do we stop, because there's another section that's not as bad, but you guys got the worst part, so I, my vehicle really appreciates you, and everybody in those neighborhoods around me really appreciate you.
I appreciate that Railroad Street as well. I've heard a lot of positive comments about that. We did regrade Railroad Street. We added drainage to get rid of the low spot, and then I instructed Chicago Land Paving when they did it. I said, "Don't, don't grind down, just butt joint, raise the, raise the whole grade of the road as they go across." And they were really, really great to work with, and can't say more about them.
I have to say, I'm really impressed with how the skip patching program has rolled out, considering when I started on this body, we didn't have anything like that. It was just, we, we, we basically rebuilt and then moved on, and this was very good foresight put to us to look into, and we've, from what I've seen, especially in some of the worst areas, we've seen significant improvement, and it's obviously getting better, and you guys' skill set is showing with each time. It's better and better. So what's been difficult for us as representatives is that the public sees the road program, we run out of money right away, it doesn't really go that far, and it doesn't see the improvement that they need, just like when we set up the sidewalk program. It's something that they can, they can see and touch and feel, and they can enjoy, rather than, a lot of the stuff is done behind the scenes. So you guys have done some fantastic work, and I'd like you to tell all the guys, you know, getting dirty every day doing that, that it's much appreciated, because-
Will do.
The residents can enjoy it and see it, you know, right away.
Absolutely.
Rob, what's the status of leaf vacuuming?
This is a highly contested subject.
You got mine, so I'm good.
I direct you to call MDC. No, so, I just got off the phone yesterday with representatives from MDC. They finished up early on this past week with their, I believe it was Westside. There is an entire, for anybody watching, there is an entire leaf-hopping operation that's going to start on Monday. Have your leaves out by Sunday night, or by Monday morning at, you know, five AM the latest, because you don't want to get skipped. They will be out roaming the streets, picking up any leaves that are left. They do have GPS on the trucks, so if you, you say they skipped us, or they drove past intentionally, they will be able to call that out. So be sure if they're not out by Monday, the next chance you get is in the spring.
All right, thank you. Staff, can we put that on the C website, social media page, so?
I'd say this is the earliest I got mine, because every year, they've not done my area, and probably because of the shape and it's difficult, and every year, I actually stopped raking my leaves, because they would get piled up, get snowed on, and then that glacier would just have a nice head start. So I, they got mine, so I'm happy.
But it, it looks cool when they're snowed over, and then the plow hits it, and it just explodes its leaves.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then they take the Parkway grass with it, because everything just goes with it into the yard.
I, I will make, I, I do have plans to make a social media post that can be shared.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Hold on, Lou, I, I apologize. So the Rush Creek upset, update you were giving, Lou, I apologize for laughing out loud. The reason why I laughed out loud on that is because that Rush Creek walking path is going to go through some property that I know the owners of, so it'll be an interesting challenge for the city to get access, and the county to get access to the land to put that path through.
That's why I laughed out loud. When you brought that up, I'm like, okay.
I'll say it again, your concern is noted.
All right, thank you. Stacy, give us an update on Parks and Recreation, please.
I don't have anything additional to add to the report that's been submitted, but we do have several holiday events coming up. So we have Eggnog Jog, which was already mentioned. I'm looking for volunteers for Eggnog Jog, and also the gingerbread showdown at the Star Line. So if anyone in this room or watching is interested, please let me know. We also have a holiday home decorating contest, so that registration opens on Mon- wait, the twenty-ninth? What day is the twenty-ninth? Whenever that is, Friday.
Friday.
So that starts on Friday. Also, a glass etching class. Originally, we planned it for kids- Originally, we planned it for kids and teens, but we decided to open it up to all ages. So if you would like to make some gifts or just gift yourself or something, that's open to everybody now. So that is on social media. Also, I just wanted to give a shout out to our basketball coach volunteers because the basketball program was a challenge to get going and, and get recruitment and everything. So they helped a whole bunch with that and it seems like it's going very smoothly so far. So activity guide was sent to the printer this week. So that is in process. It is scheduled to be delivered to the post office here on December 12th. So now we're just waiting. So it's coming. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Beyond that, we don't have police here tonight, so any updates? I know we're close to seeing Deputy Chief Sacco is going to be, he's training a few weeks. I know he was coming home for Thanksgiving and then going back, so, 13th, okay. I knew it was coming, I just didn't know what day it was. So it'll be after the next city council. Then we'll have another National Academy grad in, in our ranks, so looking forward to that. I don't think we really had much more that I noted from our police department in terms of his report is submitted.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Sure.
That, I don't know why I hadn't brought this up earlier, but at some point, I don't know if it was earlier this year or last year, we stopped getting the press release copies, the council stopped getting those from the police department. We used to get that whenever they, yeah, whenever, whenever they sent something out with the whatever.
The routine ones, yes. We still get the, the notable event ones, we still get.
Yeah, it's like something major, but we, yeah, we don't get, yeah, that, so.
So, I-
About two years now.
Is it two years?
Almost.
It's, it's been a while.
Okay.
So what I would state is that if you're interested in that information or happy to get it to you, I asked the chief one to reduce some of his workload that for major incidents that we would issue out press releases, but the, the release, the press release that we were putting out pre-communally, which included some more misdemeanor type of things, I, I felt like that was unnecessary for his workload. And so I asked him, you know, please put out press releases for major incidents. That, that is what we, to ensure that we put out. So the information is still available, but the, the press releases we were doing under the previous chief, I felt was too much. And so I pulled that away from him. If the council would like to reinstate that, then we know and we can. But I thought it, you know, considering the number of duties they had, it was just one last thing that he had to deal with. And he could concentrate on when we have major crimes that we put those releases out.
Thank you.
Sure. So moving on, I guess at staff reports, we'll go to committee reports. Anything tonight, Mr. Carrick Ross?
I would say that if there's, do we, as far as staff knows right now, do we have anything for economic development that's going to be necessary for December?
Yes, with this new development today.
Okay.
There's some incentives that we would like to discuss with the committee.
Okay. All right, then I'd like to get that schedule. I was going to say, if we didn't have anything, then we forego until January, but if you guys have something important that we need to cover that.
Unfortunately, I will not be at the next city council meeting. I'm in New York City from the 9th to the 12th, so I cannot meet during that time. I can meet next week except for, well, Wednesday probably.
Would, would this meeting have to occur before the city council meeting for action on the city council meeting or is it just more of just direction and form? Okay. So that week of the 9th through the 13th, they say no. I guess what, what would be more convenient for you, Jay?
Yeah.
If you're traveling, I mean-
Let's do the 16th, 17th, or 18th, just let me know. I'll, I'll be in any one of those if we can do that.
All right, then, what's the standing admin meeting that's, would probably be?
We're not meeting in December.
Oh, so are we meeting in December?
So your normal, your normal time would be the second Tuesday of the month?
All right, let's do the 17th then, so it'll be the third Tuesday.
I can't do it the 17th.
Oh, okay. What, would, would the 16th be better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 6:30, okay though?
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Because I have a, school district gave me three straight days of bowling tournaments.
Nice. That's fine, I don't-
What date did you name?
16th.
16th.
The Monday, the third Monday, 6:30.
6:30.
Would we be in this room or would we have to be in another room?
That's, that's a normal date for Parks. Does Parks intend to meet in December?
I was going to ask, no.
No.
All righty then.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of Parks Foundation, yeah.
Not Parks, not Parks Foundation, Parks.
We can meet in another room, it doesn't matter, I mean, it's a small group, but I just wanted to make sure we knew where we were.
Well, you have staff that crosses over. And, and to answer your question, Alderman, Laverly, right now, the, the project that we're working on, we still need a little more time to put it all together. Outside of that, we don't perceive anything that needs to go in front of the Parks for December, other than that, but since we're not going to be ready until January, there's no need to meet.
No.
Uh, no, Parks won't meet. But I just wanted to welcome, like, to the city and hopefully, hopefully it goes well. Go forward to a long tenure or as long as you want.
Yeah. All right, thank you, John.
Two things here. Discussion on space led to the finding out that there's possible foundation issues with the senior center and Lou is going to have someone, they're going to investigate that with Charlie for our next infrastructure committee meeting. We most, we might be talking about that. So just so you're aware, it doesn't, I don't think there would be, we need it for December, but if there's issues with the senior center, we're going to have to discuss that. Second thing is I attended the school district's finance meeting and in that meeting, they discussed the initial plans for the 20 acres of land that they bought, plus the school. They have a initial four-phase plan. And phases one through three, I was told by Cory that he believes that they can handle within their budget. Phase four would be, I'll kind of summarize it, would be building a 600-seat auditorium for the fine arts program, building a, like a, half of a field house, would have room for three gyms in it, converting the north gym into classrooms and a bunch of other stuff. So this is not, I mean, they're going to have public meetings, this was like the first initial plan, you know, they'd walk through it. It's going to take a little time to get through it. I think next year, what you'll see is they'll build a softball field and a detention pond where that Amish furniture building used to be, to the south of that, where that tree, there's a big oak tree, I think, that'll go away, there'll be a softball field, a detention pond there. I think that they want to try to do that next year and get that done. A lot of their planning has a lot of parking, huge amount of parking that they want to add up there for the school. Part of the proposal that they showed us was moving the football field, which I'm kind of, that's a lot of money to do it. But anyway, the point being, I think that the city, we need to be involved in that, we need to be at least understanding what they're doing because this will be a huge benefit to this community to add these things. And part of that, obviously, when they get to phase four, which is not in their budget anymore, they're going to have to ask to, for a new bond, to replace the bond of the Crosby School, which will be going away. I think Cory told me, within the next three to four years, it will disappear. So that bond rolls off. So they'll, like we did with the Parks and the, with the pool and the, and the library, they'll be asking for something to, hey, we want either, you know, new bond, here's what's for the cost, or extend the bond that we have and continue forward. So I just wanted to let everyone know I was at that meeting and it was very interesting. And they're also, the other thing that they're doing is they're actually hiring a PR firm to help them push this into the public, to not push this, but sell this to the public, right? They have to sell this because it's a pretty big thing. But it is needed, and that's my opinion. I think it's needed, I don't know, as much as they want to do is needed, but yes. Anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you, appreciate that update. You know, there, there's definitely some of that need in our community and, and looking forward to seeing the full plans, understand what's going to happen there, so, thank you. Lisa?
Sure. So, okay, no admin committee meeting in December, yay. There's a tree board meeting next Wednesday, but I was going to suggest that we not have a tree board meeting in December.
You want to cancel?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was thinking, there's nothing, there's nothing urgent.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're in a good-
Talking about Christmas trees.
Oh, there you go, yeah, yeah. There is-
Well, hey, I want to back up a little bit.
Okay.
You know, these are cranks-
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Does that end either?
Yeah, that's right, it's due the end of December, that's right. Yeah. So should, should that, yeah, should that go through a committee? Because this would, this would be, the idea was, it's a grant through trees forever that potentially could be trees to plant along the path that we're going to be putting in at Lyons Park, is in particular the extension that will be over to the, to the old community garden, because that, there's no trees.
Other than the apple trees?
Right, that at the community garden, but to actually have trees along the path and sort of do something like what was done at, at Mary's Park with planting a, a diversity of trees and having some information about the trees just to help raise awareness of the benefits of different trees in Harvard, other than maples and box, or not box elders, honey locusts. Anyway, yeah, so what's the best way to do that?
You just need to apply for a grant.
Yeah.
Send me the link to the grant.
Yeah.
They opened it up. Look at it briefly.
Yeah.
That's, that's how we do it.
Right, right. So who would?
You could just pick the application if there's no fees or anything involved.
So what it is, is if you can just, between the, the two of you, send me an email of what you're hoping to accomplish out of this, and then similar to previous grants, I'll go ahead and draft it up and, and submit it.
Yeah, it's, it should be, it should be pretty simple, like the, like the tree survey, tree inventory grant, yeah, okay.
Do you think they're going to need any kind of?
Probably not.
Just a, just a concept plan?
Very, concept, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, thank you. So I did want to bring up something for everyone's, everyone's benefit that, that I've been doing a little, little research on. You know, and I, I'm not, don't want to get into politics, national stuff, but, you know, we do have a president-elect who's talking about on day one, starting to detain people and, and throw people out of this country, immigrants, whether they're here legally or whether they're undocumented. And I did some research and there's a state law which was, I'm going to say, was signed into law by Governor Rauner, who's Republican. It's called the Illinois Trust Act, and then there's a corollary, that's the Voices Act, which is for victims of, of crimes. And the law, the Trust Act specifically prohibits local law enforcement from participating in the enforcement of federal civil immigration law. And I just thought it would be good for everyone to be aware of this, since 57% of our population in Harvard is Hispanic. And granted, most folks are documented and are citizens, but I thought it would be good for everyone to be aware that the Supreme Court has held that it's not a crime for a removable alien to remain present in the United States. And the fact that a person might be subject to deportation is not a lawful reason for arrest or detention by local law enforcement. Our police department has been completely compliant with this law since it was adopted in 2017, and I have no reason to think that they wouldn't continue to be. And personally, I just think it's important that our elected officials, our staff and our residents know that this is the law in Illinois and that regardless of what happens and what pronouncements might be made at a national level and what actions might be taken, that our local police will not participate, will not participate in assisting federal civil immigration enforcement per Illinois law. So, just thought it would be good for folks to know. And if you want to look it up, it's the Illinois Trust Act. And if you want more information, I can send it to you. Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you. Rosa, do you have anything for the council tonight?
I do not, just wishing everybody a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Matt?
No, the only thing I was going to bring up, Dan had me bring up in line 28, so we're good. Thank you, Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Charles?
Is there any reason for an infrastructure meeting? And you said you, that could be, there's no fire under that, yeah, so.
So the city council, as Alderman showed, showed out, will be discussed in January.
Okay, so I have nothing to report and no meeting.
All right, thank you. Lori, anything tonight?
Question, I don't know if this is new business or not, but there has been talk about dangerous driving in the Park Point subdivision where somebody's constantly doing it, like, at night. And so I don't know if I should bring that up to this body or if I should speak to enforcement separately.
Well, I'd say bring that to the administrator's attention and he can engage our chief. We do do, the police department does do kind of localized traffic enforcement in various areas and perhaps this is an area that they can concentrate on.
Thank you.
Sure.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item 31 is treasurer's report.
Nothing further in the treasurer's report, Mayor. Just one thing, February 15th, we're earmarking for the budget workshop, so that's technically admin committee, but if all of you could attend, it would be great. It's a Saturday, it's going to be all day.
It's odd, to avoid the anniversary.
Yes. Didn't want to get you in trouble three years in a row.
We appreciate it.
If there's any meeting that you should attend, it's that meeting if you can, because, you know, the number one, the number one thing as elected officials that we have as a responsibility is to be good stewards of taxpayers' money. And the budget is essentially how that is accomplished. So this does fall under the admin committee's responsibility, but certainly Alderman certainly recommend you consider attending that event so that we- we can have all of your-
And we'll be extending an invitation to any people who are running for Alder-
Of course, yes. In fact, if, if for those, those candidates that will be on the ballot unopposed, we certainly recommend you come attend that meeting, because that's how you're going to understand how the city operates. If you know where the money goes, you'll understand how, how the city operates. So, thank you. That's a good point. Thank you. Okay, attorney's report.
Nothing. Nothing further tonight, Mayor.
All right. Administrator's report.
Just three quick things to bring up. As noted in the admin committee, the city is moving forward with a new website to make it more user-friendly. It ties into strategic vision, as far as being able to communicate better and make it easier for everybody. We, I did want to thank Ben's Tree Farm for their donation of a tree for the Christmas. I went out and picked it, and I had Stacy go out there with me. She had to talk me down from the 50-footer to something more reasonable. Oh, no. I just, I just pick it.
We could have had a 50-foot Christmas tree.
Yeah. Well, she would have to decorate it, so.
Ah, yeah, that would, we'd have to bring out the bucket truck, I think, for that.
So, and the last thing I wanted to bring up is that, and this goes a little bit with the, the tree board, we, earlier this year, got Tree City USA recognition. That is also something that you have to submit every year, which was completed today. So we'll hopefully be recognized again, starting year two now, being a Tree City USA.
We have a little thing that we can put that says year two-
Get a little plaque with a-
It does say it every year, like two, okay, nice.
And we'll be hanging that up.
And Lou, any idea on when we'll hear on the, on the tree equity grant?
That's the one with, from Morton.
From Morton.
Yeah. We did not get that grant.
Really?
Yeah. I received word this, late this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
They did like our, our grant application. They spoke highly of it, but unfortunately, it's because of the funds requested. There's just not, if we were requesting, for everyone out there, $325,000, and they thought that was a bit too much. And so they passed on us. The nice thing is, is that we have a template now. We update it, and then we submit it again next year, but we'll be a little bit more realistic.
Okay.
That's all. That's all. All right. Thank you. Clerk's report.
Just have meeting dates for December. Short and sweet. December 3rd, Planning and Zoning Commission is canceled due to a lack of agenda items. City Council will meet December 10th at 7:00, and Community and Economic Development will meet Monday, December 16th at 6:30 PM. That is it.
That is a very light schedule. Thank you. It considered, it's considered a holiday month then. For the mayor's report, I just wanted to, a couple of things. One, we are in competition with local, other mayors within the McHenry County for Salvation Army, Red Kettle. So I'll be out there ringing the bell out of, I think we're going to do it at Walmart, I think is where we typically do it. And it's a contest to try and collect as much as possible. So look forward to ringing the bell, and maybe I'll reprise my Santa suit for that event. You should ring the bell over in McHenry. Gather their money for our community. Yeah, yeah. That might not be a bad idea. I think it is March, oh, I'm sorry, January, March, Lily. Yeah, I won't win then. Let's see. I think it is the 14th is the date. So it's a week after Christmas in Harvard. Thank you to Donovan for standing in for me. They had the Red Kettle kickoff, which was the same night of the administration meeting last week. So Donovan was able to stand in and represent the city of Harvard. So thank you for doing that. Also want to thank Sandra Alcar, who, and her company, Superior Pallets Incorporated, who have put together all the Festival of Trees downtown. So, and I think there were still one or two trees available left to sponsor if you're interested. The cost to sponsor this year is $50. That's because we were unable to get any free trees. They were donated at a, basically a cost, but we were unable to get free trees this year. So, and they're, I think they're already set up for people to decorate. So if you are interested in sponsoring, you can contact, I guess, the city's, the city clerk, and then we'll get you connected to Sandra for the trees, because I don't know who has what tree where. I don't have that information. So thank you for that. And Christmas in Harvard happens December 7th, before our next meeting. There's a ton of activities that are scheduled that day, including the eggnog jog. And Harvard Milk Days has taken over the parade. So it'll be Harmilda's Christmas Parade that'll happen. It's a lighted parade, which will be down Air Street, and then it'll culminate at the end, the parade starts at 6:00, and then after that, we'll have a lighting of the city's Christmas tree. And then there'll be Mr., or Santa and Mrs. Claus will be at the Community Health Partnership for pictures and cookies and milk. So looking forward to that community activity, and it should be a lot of fun. So looking forward to the holidays. That's all I have for the mayor's report. At this time, we would like to go into closed session.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I need to identify the bases.
Yeah.
Identify the bases for why we're going.
Oh, yeah. So we're seeking a motion to go into closed session to discuss Community and Economic Development Committee Closed Session Section 2C5, purchase and lease of real estate, and to discuss Administration Committee's Closed Session Section 2C11 for litigation. Motion by Carncross, second by Hatterline. Any comments, questions? Call the roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you. We will pause the stream.
Motion to come back in open session?
Second. Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
All right. Item 38 is, 38A, I don't believe there's any action item, 38B.
Motion to approve the action regarding the administrative committee meeting's closed session, Section 2C11 litigation in the annexation agreement. A motion to enforce litigation in the annexation agreement.
I'll, can I amend that one with a second, though?
Why do you just recommend what you like?
Okay, because I just, yeah, what you, just include the Merriman Annexation.
Merriman, I'll amend my motion to include the termina, the name Merriman Annexation Agreement.
I'll second that amendment. All right. We have a motion in a second to, to have staff move forward with litigation concerning the Merriman Annexation Agreement. Any comments or questions? Attorney, non-clerk, call the roll.
Woman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you. We've reached item 39, which-
Make a motion to adjourn.
No.
I was going to say, Rosa called in.
Oh, yeah.
Second by Lancaster.
No, Rosa should do it.
Motion by Perkins, second by Lancaster. Any comments, questions here? Attorney, non-clerk, call the roll.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This meeting is closed. Thank you.
It didn't take that long. I'll think since it.